Okay, gang. We ready? So, good afternoon, everyone. Today is Wednesday, July 13, 2022. Time is 2:04. And we have a special meeting agenda with our consultant, Alliant Insurance Services, and attending our commissioners Duncan and Filios. Commissioner Bill Brooks will be joining us shortly. Any changes to the agenda? Hearing none. We have only one business item. Review fiscal year 23 health insurance options with Alliant Services. Representatives Scott Burkhardt, David Smith, and Coco Brockoff. And Scott, should I turn it over to you for starters?
Yes. Yes, thank you. I'm gonna let David Smith start out and go through some budget numbers, and then we'll talk about recommendations for the next cycle.
Turn your microphone on.
Have you heard my voice?
Thank you.
Okay. Now, I'll talk not too loud. So, the first thing we look at is, you know, as we look at moving forward to next year is how are we doing with this year's budget? Because it, you know, informs us a little bit of what's going on currently. And so, when you look up there, you see the 2022 projected, what we had projected last year for the October to ending September budget. What we have through eight months, so this is dated through May. June is just now becoming available, maybe the next couple of days, so we don't have June there. So, it's dated through May. And we changed that projected into an eight-month number so that you can look at the comparison to actual fairly accurately. I could go line by line, but that kind of moves around a little bit. I think the primary focus is how are you doing overall? So, if you focus in the total, we're about $350,000 better than the projection at this point. We know that we tend to finish a little worse as the year goes on. So, really, that 350 looks like it's about a break even. That's the expectation for the end of the year, barring anything unforeseen bad or really good. But we look like to be, you know, right on target with where we're going. Part of what's helped us a little bit, you know, is that we haven't had growth taking us past our numbers, because when we've been off historically, it's because you grew maybe a little bit faster than what was being estimated. So, we're right on target there as well.
And this is calendar year?
No, this is October through September.
Oh, this is our fiscal year?
Yeah, so this is your fiscal year when talking the budget. So, right here, we're looking at the eight months is October through May.
Oh, that's right.
You know, and so, overall, we're doing, you know, we're doing pretty good. We're doing as expected. Should I pause for a second?
Bill, do you want to come up here?
No.
That's a good spot? All right.
Besides, that mic's picking you up anyway.
Oh, it's off.
Well, good job, Bill. Okay, sorry, guys.
So, when we take the look at the 2022 projected, we can look at the 2023 projection and where that's taking us. And there's a couple, you know, we started with some of the minor items, which is, you know, and we're doing them by your accounts, you know, and your accounting, how that's lined up. So, it's, you know, fairly straightforward. The 125 administrative fee, there's a slight increase there. It's really not an increase in cost, it's just coming in higher this year than where we were projected. Consultant fee is staying the same. Every year, I ask Scott for a raise, and he doesn't give me one, and so that stays right where it is. Administrative fees, again, those stay pretty flat. We assume some slight increases to those, but those are sometimes offset by where things are moving. These are the administrative fees for Delta, for VSP, and for the Blue Cross Plan, the Regions Plan. And so, when you, when you look at those, some things that cause some shift at times is because we've added that Willamette Dental, which is fully insured, so there's no administrative fee, there's just premium. On occasion, if that will move, if more people move to that, that means your Delta administrative fees will go down, but your premiums go up. So, the things that really move, premiums and fees, that's going up by 2.7% as an estimate. And, you know, those change on January 1st. Just so you guys know, when we're looking at stop-loss premiums and Willamette, those change January 1st. So, we take that into account in the calculations, knowing that we'll have three months in the fiscal year, October through December. That is with the current rates and fees in place, and then nine months with the new rates and fees that are going to be in place. Medical claims, we see growth of about 5.4%. That's because we're doing a little bit better than average. The trend that we're using is about 7% overall trend. That takes us forward to that point in time. We are starting to see some uptick, just as some forewarning, maybe for the coming year afterwards, if we don't see that go down. Inflation is starting to impact drug prices, so that's where we're seeing that the most. Drug prices change four to six times a year, tend to be on random dates. May 15th, the price changes for these drugs, and then, you know, June 22nd changes for these drugs. And so, those prices change more rapidly. Medical care prices, those are more annual. So, the prices that doctors get paid, hospitals get paid, they tend to change on January 1st. And the physician fees don't change that much. We don't, you know, anticipate them, but hospital fees go up a little bit higher. So, in general, that's kind of what drives that trend. Dental claims, increasing by 10.2%. That's not that we're seeing that. The dental trend, we keep pretty flat, but the dental claims are a little bit higher this year than what was projected, and so that's why you see the increase in the projection. And then also, if there is a little bit more Delta enrollment than we anticipated, that's also what causes that. So, there's not, there's not growth in dental that we need to watch out for, there's not some massive spike in claims that's an issue. It's just that we do know that this happened. We also know in part what's going on with the dental, is some people didn't access dental as much in 2020 during COVID, and they accessed it more in 2021. So, that's playing into that a little bit. But there's nothing, when you see that number being really one of the biggest numbers on there, there's nothing to be concerned about with it. And I expect that it will, you know, kind of flatten out next year. Vision claims, again, the budget going down by 3.8%. We're not seeing vision claims going down, it's just they come in lower, so the budget changes, but claims aren't doing that. We're actually using a trend of 2.5% on the vision. It's just where it's kind of coming out here. And then other miscellaneous payments. So, overall, a 4.9% increase, which accounts for the fact that, you know, we do anticipate a little bit more enrollment growth, just a little bit. If we look at the next page, we take that 4.9%, and then you have the question of, you know, if the employees don't pay more, so the contributions out of their paychecks for coverage, so they have their contributions for medical, for dental, for vision, if those are unchanged from year to year, that means that the county absorbs the bulk of the increase, which means your actual increase is 5.8. You know, and so, the question is, you know, at a 4.9, do you assume that the contributions also go up by the same amount, or do you assume that they don't? And that's really your starting point of whether you're looking at 4.9 or 5.8 overall. The growth, you can see there below, we're assuming 1.3%, a little bit for Delta, a little bit more for Willamette, and then some bigger growth in the vision just because of what we've seen has been catching up. Overall, if you were to take the growth out of the 4.9, you're really looking at about 3.5% starting point. I only mention that because, you know, when you're dealing with a private organization, they look at the PEPM, per employee per month, and that's what they focus on. And so, I just kind of wanted to change that context. So, as a private business, the conversation we started at 3.5, we're starting at a 4.9 just because we have that enrollment growth that we're already baking into it. And those are all below what others are experiencing. Most people didn't experience increases last year, but a lot of companies that we do work for are going to be experiencing increases, you know, in this coming year, and we expect, you know, that's what a lot of people will see. So, we think that puts you in a pretty good competitive position, but there are things to consider if you want to reduce what that impact is, depending on what your budget ramifications are.
Perfect. Thanks, David. Scott Burkhardt with Alliant. So, just a little history on employee contributions and benefits for the employees, what their costs, what they see. There's been no increases to employee contributions the past three years, and also no changes to employee benefits the past three years. Obviously, a couple of those years were during the pandemic, and we're still rolling out of that. And the national trend was minimal changes to benefits, so that's right in line. But that's a, you know, a positive message for employees, no changes the past three years. The 2023 considerations with a modest renewal, you know, no increases is favorable, but ours is modest in our terms. We're not recommending any significant changes except for consideration of the two models that I introduced or we introduced on June 27th here to the board, the PMR Healthcare and Edison Healthcare. And I'll just go through a quick reminder of each model. The PMR Healthcare, consider that on the front end of care, it's concierge primary care service, where they will actually build out a local primary care office for Cootney County employees. Okay? There, it's an emerging trend. It's been popular on the East Coast, moved West Coast the last few years, they're just moving into this area, this concept. It is one of the models, strategies, and employee benefits that can have significant impact. Okay? And it's not a benefit reduction to employees, it's actually a benefit enhancement for employees in that there's no deductibles, no copays, no co-insurance to utilize their services. Okay? It's a big upfront commitment in costs. Their estimated fixed costs are 1.35 million. Okay? Now, if we, I'm not going to ask Coco to go back, but remember a couple slides earlier when David was showing the line item budget of medical claims of 9.7-ish million. Okay? What we're doing is basically moving some of those dollars over to that 1.35 million. Okay? There's additional buckets where that money comes from, but the overall cost is 1.35, and that involves a one-time setup fee of 250,000. And I put a note, possible ARPA, as Keith was going to look into whether that would qualify. There it is.
Oh, yeah. We do still need to find that out, but I.
We're waiting to hear from Armo. We've reached out to them.
Correct.
So, we're just waiting for that.
Okay. And then, ongoing annual costs are 1.1 million. Okay? So, that's where the 1.35. Now, that's the cost. On the other side is the return on investment. Okay? From, PMR Healthcare has been doing this for 15 years. They have a team that looks at, just a team of Davids, let's say, that looks at claims data. They looked at 50,000 lines of Cootney County's actual claims data, and in their methodology, come up with a return on investment. They estimated $750,000 savings. In the budget numbers that we're going to show you here in a second, we greatly reduced that to be very conservative, and it still turns out very favorable. The estimated five-year ROI, which we'll show here in a second, is 5.8 million from their numbers. Okay? No member deductibles out of pocket, and it's a tremendous member benefit with enhanced provider access and focus on overall health. Right now, it's challenging for people to get into office visits. When they get in, it's a get in, get out, right? They diagnose, they give you medication, and you're out the door. The focus with PMR is more dedicated, one-on-one care. Basically, can be same-day appointments. You're going to get 20, 30, 40-minute appointments instead of 10. And there's significant lower unit costs, service costs, that we'll show here in a second. So, go ahead and go to the next screen. This is the five-year savings estimate. The 5.8 million I just referenced is a combination of all five years there down below. 750,000 returned in the first year, what they estimate, and that moves up year over year over year. And so, this on a scale basis, when David talks about trend, average trend that everybody sees nationwide, this is going to pull that down for Cootney County as we look at the next five years. Okay? Let's go ahead. This is one of the straight-up savings that they can represent, is on actual services. So, we had them do a random, poll random services, medical procedures, so let's just take the bottom one, office visit up there on the top. A normal office visit, what their, our average that they're seeing in the claims data is almost $90 per visit. Their cost is 48. This is not member cost, this is what the cost basically to the county is. There, another feature that they're going to have is they looked at your actual claims data, they will stock their facility with prescription drugs. They can't do narcotics by law, but a lot of the prescription drugs that county members are taking, they will have onsite. So, a member could theoretically go to a visit, get the medication that they need at that same visit without having to go fill it at a pharmacy. Prozac, for example, maybe bad example, but it's a significant cost, $48 market cost, their cost is four. Flomax, 55 market cost, their cost is 19. When we, they can do labs in their facility. That's another thing where there's significant markup in the current health system when you're sent out to one of the major labs. There's a lot of the labs that they can do in their facility. Thyroid panel, for example, 65 market, what we're paying, 15, their model. So, in addition to the unit costs, where they come up with savings is ER and urgent care avoidance, okay? They're also going to be, their model is to spend a lot more time with patients, disease management, get diabetics, you know, compliant with their needs. So, overall, in their model, in their experience, that's where they come up with the savings estimate. Okay? The next one that we're going to, that we talked about is Edison Healthcare. This one is pretty straightforward. The concept is kind of simple to understand, it's on the back end. Major care, major surgeries, okay? Transplants, spine, cardiac surgery. These people, that's what they specialize in, they've developed Centers of Excellence all across the country, major institutions that they've credentialed, have special pricing arrangements. This, both this and PMR are totally voluntary. It's not a major switch, you know, in insurance companies or insurance models. It's just they're voluntary, we'll promote them to the employees at time of care. Chris, as, you know, you were asking about last time, how do you get into this? It's at time of care and it's awareness. So, we need to ongoing communicate this, that this is available. It's concierge, start to finish. If someone finds out they've got, you know, God forbid, an unfortunate diagnosis, call this number. They don't have to switch care to here, but it's worth exploring. Let's get a second opinion, let's go to Seattle, to the Center of Excellence, and see if this, you know, cancer diagnosis is accurate, and if so, let's use this facility. Significantly lower cost, better outcomes, et cetera. So, it's a win-win-win model for everyone, and again, it's completely voluntary. But someone could theoretically go into this, you know, right now, our medical plan has a deductible and has an out-of-pocket and all that. There's no member deductibles or out-of-pocket here. It could be $100,000, $200,000 procedure, and the member pays, pays no out-of-pocket costs or no travel costs, if they're able to travel, of course, in this model. That's all included in the fees. So, estimated first fixed costs, as you can see, it's a much lower commitment, 63,000. And their estimated ROI that they presented in their meeting, or in our presentation last time, was 350,000. In our numbers that we're going to show you, we greatly reduced that. However, just yesterday, they sent me, that's as promised, their official proposal, their estimate first year bumped up on actual claims data to close to 800,000. Okay? That's all dependent on people utilizing this program, of course. How many will use it? I mean, we could, you know, predict a number for you, which we have included in the budget conservatively, but from a practical standpoint, if we get one person to utilize this program, it should hopefully offset much of that fixed cost commitment. So, that's why we're thinking this is a pretty straightforward program to recommend. So, the other thing, one, let's go to the next one. The other thing which I didn't mention, consideration, Alliant, we're agreeable to another two-year rate guarantee. David gets no raise, no cost increase. Just some reminders, we've had no fee increases the last five years. We've got a great working relationship with the county HR finance and the board. Last year, just a couple of our kudos to pat ourselves on the back, we saved the county $370,000 simply on RX negotiations on pricing. That's just getting David's team involved with Regions and saying, we need to reduce your costs. And we've also got a proprietary Alliant Stop-Loss Refund Contract that over two years has saved, given the county back $140,000. So, with that, our recommendations are for the next renewal, no changes to employee contributions or benefit levels. We are recommending implement the PMR near-site clinic, or let's talk about a plan, how we want to further vet that or consider that. For that to implement, we need about 90 days in advance from January 1st. Let's tack on another 30 just to be safe, so that puts us, I think, at September 1st, August 1st?
I'm thinking that.
I'm thinking on the fly. But, so a decision on that does not have to be made today, the earlier the better, and it will impact your budget commitment, as we're going to talk about here in a second, what you decide to make. But we are recommending moving forward with that and Edison, and of course, our Alliant. So, the budget impact, if, these are David's numbers that we went through upfront, no changes. It's a 4.9% total plan increase, 5.8 net to the county. If we only introduce the PMR near-site clinics with very conservative ROI estimates, changes to a 1.5% total, 1.8% to the county. If we only implement Edison, you can see here, 3.2 and 3.8, based on their updated ROI, we might be able to convince David to come down on these tweak. But this is where we're officially at today. Okay? 3.2 and 3.8. And then, if we implement PMR and Edison, gets us to a negative renewal, which I think is great news. So, that is the end of our presentation. Questions?
Bill, Leslie?
No, I.
Let's come back to this one here.
Both of the PMR and the Edison look really good. I mean, and I know that's, there's an upfront cost, but I like getting more service for no more money.
What level of participation do you need to activate these programs?
There's no level to implement. The ROI is the success of the program is based on participation. In PMR's experience, that's what they presented, they've done this with hundreds of employers nationwide, they typically see 40% of the members will eventually utilize PMR. Okay? On Edison, I think they base their return on around 10 people utilizing the program is, will get you an ROI with Edison.
That's interesting.
I think with the inflation doing what it's doing to everybody, there's going to be a lot of ways, be sought to save money and get services without paying a lot of money. I think this may be a good way to try to help employees.
And access to primary care is a true problem here in Coeur d'Alene.
It's a problem to the state.
Yeah, it is. It's a problem everywhere, really, but.
Yeah, it's getting worse.
You don't have your microphone on, sorry.
Oh, and it's getting worse for a lot of different reasons. Just because of, you know, a lot of doctors retired because of COVID, and left the profession early because they were close enough and they felt like they were fine. And a lot of doctors have changed what they're doing, meaning, you know, they can do telehealth now, I can work from Hawaii and set my hours to what I want. And so, we're seeing a lot in the profession move out of the office setting and into other settings because they can do that. And all those things are putting pressure on people being able to get access to care. And so, I think you're going to see a lot more people moving to this kind of thing to really provide an extra value, even if it was net neutral cost, just to provide an extra value to the employees and save them time in trying to get things done and, you know, find a provider, which is pretty onerous at this point in time. I know, because I'm in between.
Jill, you had a question?
I was just going to attest to that, because I'm relatively new to the area, and I can't find a primary care physician, and I did go to one, and they sucked. But it is, it's very, very difficult. If you're not already an established patient, you take whatever you can get, and you know what that means if I get sick, is I'm going to urgent care because I don't have a PCP. And it's not through a lack of trying, it's a lack of availability.
Steve had a.
Couple, oh, is there another question?
Steve? And we're not going to be able to hear you, so you've got to come to a microphone. Oh, he's got one on that table. That's good.
The PMR near-site clinics, how are they staffed? What's the physician and ratio? Is that how they do their savings?
Yeah. So, they, I don't have the proposal in front of me, we'll see if we can get it pulled up here, but they recruit specifically for this area, for this role. They're, I'm going off memory here, but I think their ratio that they like to work around is 1,400 patients.
Yeah.
Per physician.
Yeah.
Okay? And I believe they will staff with, under, the proposal for the county was a PCP along with nurse, I believe.
Nurse.
Yeah, we can pull up the specifics on that. But they base their staffing on your actual claims data, historical. They look at what each employer needs, what they're utilizing. Like, I've got another employer where they're only recommending a only, a lower level, not a physician level, but I forget what's the title.
Mid-level practitioner.
Nurse practitioner, exactly. But not for the county, they're recommending a primary care physician.
So, the county doesn't determine what the coverage is from the standpoint of physician versus nurse practitioners, it's PMR?
You could have input in that, in their expertise, that's what they're recommending, but if you would prefer a different model, they'll, they will talk to you and explain why that's good or not good, not good, not the right word, but necessary. Another point on that topic is mental health. They didn't allot for a mental health practitioner in this office, but that potential exists under this model. If we find a great need, and we know there's a huge shortage right now in that area, we could request that they get a staff counselor, a mental health professional.
Likely, probably off-site, though. That's probably telehealth for the mental health?
It could be onsite, if needed, if it warrants. But in the model that they quoted, the numbers that we're showing as is, they did not include a mental health professional.
And is there a PMR near-site clinic that one of us could drive by and see the physical location in this community, or?
In Boise, there is. That's, they're moving in this area, they've got one employer here locally that has committed. They are actually doing a mobile clinic, so they're, under their model, they've got different locations. They're building out a mobile home under their model, and it's going to go location to location. A client that I've got with multiple locations around the country is going to do the same thing in Nevada, a mobile, but they're also looking to do a near-site facility in South Dakota. So, this, locally here, there is no PMR clinic at this point, but there is a commitment for mobile, and yeah.
Can you share with us any other employers that are considering this option in this community?
I want to be careful confidentially because there are NDAs, and I can tell you two other major employers that are considering it, and I prefer not to name names because they haven't made a commitment.
Can you give me the number of employees? Are we talking?
Thousand employees at one, and 500 at the other.
Okay. Thank you.
So far, there is, we're going to be presenting this over the next year to a number of employers, both in Boise and here, but right now, those are the discussions.
Jill?
So, if there are these two other entities that are considering this, would we share a facility and you just add more doctors or practitioners, or would it be three separate facilities?
Yeah. Great, great question, and the way it's currently structured is just your membership with Cootney County is about exactly at their model for you. Okay? I've got another employer that might be, they call it an anchor employer, where, let's say, they're. say there are 1,000 employees, there might be an employer with 200 employees. If you were only, a standalone 200 employer, this model probably wouldn't make financial sense. It'd be too much of a commitment for one entity. But as an anchor, and if it makes business sense for both, there's no conflicts or competing interests, those discussions can be had to share costs. And we can even do that with the county, but you're already pushing up against the patient-to-prosumer ratio right now, as is on your own. So.
So, does this have to be done by September 1st as far as, what if we wanted to not have it start in January? Can it start some other time?
Yes. Yeah, there's no January 1 commitment. That's just when your renewal starts and it could be started off here, absolutely, or off, yeah, cycle.
Right. I am fine with committing to Edison today and to Alliant today and to no employee cost sharing, you know, as far as not raising their contribution. I still would like to think about PMR, and I'm going to Boise in September, so it'd be really nice to be able to visit and, you know, get a better idea of what's going on. And I'd also like to meet with the elected officials, too, to talk to them about it.
Great. Can you put the cost back up? Um, no, you know, that, yeah, there you go. Okay, so that's PMR. I'm kind of agreeing with Leslie. I think I would opt for Edison first, but can you show Edison?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so, help me out here. So estimated fixed costs here, what, no, I'm okay. 63,000 or seven bucks per employee?
Per month.
Yeah. Go ahead.
Yeah, under their model, it's pretty straightforward. They just charge $7 per employee per month, and it's just like another insurance bill that you're going to pay. It'll adjust up and down with employment numbers, so, but based on your current enrollment at 63,000. The return on investment will come at time of service. They are contracted providers with the blues, okay? And we'll see that in the claims data hopefully over the next year or two. If we get 10 people who normally would have gone to Sacred Heart or, you know, another facility, hopefully if they're using an Edison Center of Excellence, we'll see our claim costs go down substantially.
So, okay, so basically, it's 63,000 bucks, so if only, what's your view of this?
Well, 10 people, I mean, they're projecting if only 10 people out of 760 use this, then it will have a, what is that, 35 divided by 6, that kind of savings.
800,000 was their calculation, right?
Yeah, and that's based on more than 10.
Yeah, it's based on more than 10.
Yeah.
But the fact is, it's still 63,000 bucks.
Fixed cost, yes.
Fixed cost, every annually.
Correct.
Okay. So if 10 people show, if 10 people sign up, county's making up the difference. Yes?
Okay, so if 10 people show up, we're going to save 350,000.
Yeah. Yeah, you're going to, you're going to pay the 63,000. It's based on 750 employees. Every, you're paying that for every.
Oh, I see. So you're averaging out, you're saying that it averages out to seven, okay.
Yes.
Right.
Yep.
Not that, not that we're necess, I get it. Okay.
Right, yeah, we're not paying per the 10 employees or whoever, how many. But if we have any major things like cancer or transplants or something like that, then this is a model that is going to make up the difference in year one for a low investment of the 63,000.
Yep. And the program is totally voluntary. There's a few procedures that could be considered where you make this mandatory. Okay? That's a really, that's pushing the envelope. The more intrusive you make this, the more investment return you're going to get. Walmart, for example, where this is, they have it mandatory for a lot of services, like, loosely paraphrasing here, but transplant, spines, cardiac, they say you have to call this number if you have these things. We're making it voluntary. Okay? First year. But the second year, let's see how it goes, the plan, and this is PMR's, Edison's recommendation too, is see how it goes, get it introduced, and then maybe in the second year, consider making it mandatory for transplants. Transplants happen, you might not have one for three years on your plan, but when you do, let's say, you know, someone in that major care is wondering what to do, right? And it's not a matter of staying with their same physician. So they're willing to call a phone number, and if they're able medically to travel, their average transplant cost, I think they said for a kidney is 80,000, I think they said, whereas we might see 250 or 300,000 or higher cost at another facility, so.
And that's, that's a savings on stop-loss as well, because usually when you put these programs in place, if the stop-loss knows you're making it mandatory, that lessens their risk. And so you'll also see a negotiating advantage in that instance.
Go ahead, Jill.
What Centers of Excellence are anywhere near here?
Yeah, I don't have the list of names here. They went through those in the presentation. I'll get to those, but.
You have one in Seattle, I found.
Yeah, one in Seattle. Is Seattle? Arizona?
Yeah, and it's not a matter, I, oh, go ahead.
Mm-hmm. Salt Lake City.
Yeah, well, yeah, from city, but it's not a matter of any hospital can do all procedures. They have specialty procedures at given hospitals. So, in other words, if you have a heart issue, it might not be Seattle where they recommend, it might be Atlanta, okay? Or a transplant, that's the model.
Are there any excellent places in Hawaii?
I didn't see that on their map, but I think they said Mayo.
You got Kaiser.
Mayo is one, yeah.
Hawaii's a whole, you know, they have socialized healthcare over there.
Uh, never mind.
Okay.
I think I'm good. Bill?
Yep. Very nicely done. Thank you.
All right. I don't even have anybody to ask if this needs an official motion, I think.
So, two out of three at least are okay committing to Edison?
Yeah.
And then committing to no.
Three out of three.
Three out of three?
And no employee increase.
Correct.
It's all county.
Yes.
And then PMR would still be up for discussion after your visit to Boise?
Yes.
And maybe we can regroup or just connect with you, Leslie, and see if you want us all to get together again, the three commissioners, if you want us to get together and say, hey, yeah, let's do or not do PMR.
Sure. Yeah, we can do that. And I think Steve's planning on Seattle. I don't, I mean, Boise, I don't know if, it's probably Jennifer will be in Boise, so we're going to try to get several of us down there, so.
And so, David, we can get a, will that change the FY '23 cost production?
Yeah. If you move it back three months, or, yeah, it changes it a little bit, but again, we went with very low, because I'm a skeptic. So, you know, when a salesperson gives me a number, I cut that thing in half, and then I say, that's too high, and I cut it in half, because that's, you know, they're doing their job and I can do mine.
A true mathematician.
And these things are complex to, you know, I want to warn you. So, the ROI on these things are sometimes complex, and we want to do our own calculations on them. Best way I could equate it to would be, you know, do you do an ROI on your Costco membership? Right? I know if I'm saving 50 cents per roll of toilet paper, I'm going to save that money. But if I'm saving 5 cents per slice of bread, but I buy four loaves of bread and I throw out three of them, I'm not saving any money. Right? Or all of a sudden, my family now eats twice as much because we have it all there. I have some extra value because I got more food, but again, I'm spending more money. And so, when the healthcare becomes more convenient, you know, at times you have to say, okay, I don't care if it's an extra value. You know, we're trying to save money, so I want to, I want to kind of take out, okay, we added some stuff, take that out of it and say, here's how much we actually saved. Now, do you think there's value to the fact that people had cared that they accessed? You know, and that's, you know, that can vary whether or not I think that has a value. You know, I'm not going to associate what I value that as, that's what you value it as. But there's some complexity in that calculation, and they don't always do that because they got to justify themselves, but we do that. And we would set that up, you know, when you said, hey, we're going to go, you know, we would set up in advance, here's the criteria that we're going to measure the savings on. Here's what we expect. And then here's the expectations as far as the throughput, you know, when it's going to ramp up into what, and then what that kind of turns into. So we'd be doing that on our own, even though they're going to do it, we'd do that separate.
Anyone else? I've got 2:43, meeting adjourned. Thanks.